I call this meeting of the Grafton Select Board to order. And I'm just going to read something really quickly. Can everybody hear me? Okay. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, the various boards and committees representing the town of Grafton will conduct their public meeting and hearings via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Just to remind everyone, we are using Zoom meeting, and if you are to share your screen, it will be recorded and available to the public. In addition, if you'd like access to the floor, please raise your hand, and I will call on you and allow you to have the floor to ask your questions. Now I'm going to take roll call. When I call your name, please announce you're here in the affirmative. Matthew Ofton.
Ofton is here.
Ed Prisby. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and Colleen Roy present, and then Town Staff President Carter Terranzini.
Present.
Paul Canoyer.
Present.
And additional speakers present Lauren Napolitano.
Present.
All right. So first on the agenda, we have a public hearing for a poll petition on Old Rest Borough Road. National Grid will be here to present and discuss the poll petition submittal and answer any questions.
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. Motion, motion made and seconded. All those in favor. Matt?
Ofton, aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Roy, aye. Okay, so declare the hearing open. So Ms. Napolitano, would you like to start?
Sure, I will just read what the petition form states. Can y'all, can y'all hear me okay?
I apologize. I think I need to read the legal notice first.
Oh, so sorry.
Yeah, that's my mistake. So the Select Board will hold a public hearing on the request of National Grid to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along the access, along across the following public way, Old West Borough Road. Install four SO poles on Old West Borough Road, beginning at the point approximately 1,500 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Weston Street and continuing approximately 20 feet in a northern direction. Install four 35C two stub poles to support P 66, P 69, P 83, and P 84. Work being done so tree guys can be removed, and to lay and maintain underground lateral cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. The public hearing will be held on October 13 and will take place via Zoom. The meeting link will be posted on the October 13 agenda. The Select Board's meeting begins at 7:00 PM. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment, and anyone wishing to may attend via Zoom. So now that's read. I believe Ms. Napolitano, you can begin.
Sure. Can y'all hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So basically, what you said is correct. We have four poles, 66, 69, 83, and 84 that are currently being supported by a tree guy. And the tree guys have to be removed, but we still have to support those poles. So we're going to install stub poles across the street, or yeah, it looks like across the street from the existing poles, so that we can do a pole guy, pole to pole guy, so we can support those poles.
Okay, Mr. Canoyer, is there anything you would like to add to that?
Paul. All right. Right there, I am back. So now, so the the support poles are obviously needed to hold up the poles across the street. The big tree in the common is a good example of a support that was guided by a tree. When the tree falls, the wire, the poles come down and everything else. Now large maple fell in the common last year. But if you look at the, the four support poles closest to Weston Road, they're all leaning heavily to the right. They need to be re-supported. So the two guide poles that will be across the street to hold those up, we'll pull them back straight. And then at the town line where the other two are going, it's the same situation. The trees are dead, they're cut off halfway down with the cables still attached. It's only a matter of time before those fall as well.
Okay. Thank you for that information, both Mr. Canoyer and Mrs. Napolitano. Does the board have any questions for either?
Is there any impact to traffic or any, you know, thing that needs to be communicated to the public?
I'm not, there's none at all, actually. The poles, really, there's already cables across the street going to the trees. So they're really just replacing the tree with a, with a real telephone. And then it's just supporting existing poles that are already
Okay.
All right. And this is a public hearing. So at this time, we'll take any public comment that may be add for this. Do you see anything at all, Matt?
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay. Guess we'll give it a couple of seconds. All right. So I guess I'll take a motion to end the public hearing. All right. Second.
Before we do, we have to make a vote while we're still in the public hearing?
Um. I have it. Yeah, I have it as open the hearing, close the hearing, and then vote, but.
Okay. Then I will second Ed's motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded by roll call. Mr. Ofton.
Ofton, aye.
Prisby.
Prisby, aye.
Roy, aye. Okay, the public hearing is closed. And I'll take a motion for the board to approve the poll petition as presented for Old West Borough Road.
I move that the board vote to approve the poll petition as presented for Old West Borough Road.
And do you have a second?
Thanks.
I second it. Okay. So motion made and seconded, Mr. Ofton.
Ofton, aye.
Mr. Prisby.
Prisby, aye.
Roy, aye. Okay, so that motion passes. So that's all set. Thanks to Mrs. Napolitano and Mr. Canoyer for coming in tonight.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
You too.
Thank you.
All right. So next on the agenda is the national election and support for the town clerk's office. I think Mr. Terranzini has an update to give us on that.
So I was able today to connect with Ms. Goldberg. We've sent you out. I was able to connect with the clerk and also spent some considerable time with Mr. Cook. I've sent you all a update as of mid-afternoon here. And for the public's consumption, I'll brief you, review it if that is agreeable to you, Madam Chair.
I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
So Ms. Goldberg, and this relates to the ex-election audit. She had not yet been able to connect with the clerk due to her current leave time. And we discussed how to proceed. We need to get a document and get this moving along. So she and I agreed that the best thing to do would be for her to speak with Mr. Cook, who is the Assistant Town Clerk. And they now have a scheduled Zoom conference tomorrow morning to have that discussion. She will also take advantage of the various documents that have been supplied to date. I am assuming, and please correct me if I'm not correct, that she has the court document and she has the staff memorandum on this with thought in hand. And, and she'll continue to, to try to be able to connect with the town clerk. She expects to be able to complete by close of business Friday, a draft memorandum for review and consideration. That document will remain draft until such time as she's able to complete her conversation with the town clerk. So we will have the advantage of those recommendations, some of those recommendations from the draft in time to include them in the November election. With respect to the most immediate matter, which is the timing of the town meeting coming up here on October 19, I reviewed with Mr. Cook his level of preparedness. He felt that he was reasonably prepared. We had already supplied to him the articles in motions separated out by article so that they stood alone. Some are only about a half page, as you know. And he likes to take his notes on the paper itself. So I discussed with him how he might change some of the formatting, whether it was going to double line spacing or changing the margin. Or whatever, just to get that document into a shape that he is most comfortable with, and he's going to review and do what he needs to do. They will also be reviewing how to identify voters at the meeting. And I'm not sure if I've sent that separate email out. If the moderator did not, or I had not, I'll be sure to get it out to y'all on Thursday morning. So with respect to the incoming mail and the early drop box ballots, those that are being left in the drop box out front, Mr. Cook felt that he currently has sufficient staff to prepare the ballots for processing as they come in. So the first step is merely to slice open the outer mailing envelope. That's the, not the inner sealed ballot envelope itself. That is not opened. And the timestamp both envelopes in for processing. I offered to provide some additional assistance if he thought it was necessary, but he advised that he felt that that needed to be done by trained election workers. In this case, I want to make sure folks know that your former town clerk is stepping in to help Paul out in every way that she can. And Ms. Billings, Nancy Billings, Marguerite Berry, Beryl, please forgive me if I slaughter the pronunciation in Carol Zimba, each of whom are trained election workers, have stepped in and are working with Paul in the office currently to make sure all of those are processed. Beyond opening the mailing envelopes, once that's all done, then those trained election workers, under Paul's direction and your former town clerk's direction, will proceed to prepare them for actual scanning on the day of voting. That consists of scanning the voter identification bar, separating the ballot envelopes by precinct. They remain unopened at this point in time. And preparing the list of those who voted in the manner of mail-in and/or drop backs. Those then go off to the various precincts for actual counting. Also, I've urged Paul, and he has agreed, to empty the drop box twice daily, including the weekends through and including Election Day. I know it was a little bit full this morning over the three-day weekend. So he's going to be here for early voting, and he's agreed that that is a good idea to make sure that that box is always able to take ballots as they're dropped off. With respect to early voting, which starts here this coming weekend, Paul felt that he had sufficient staff in terms of wardens and election workers, clerks, to maintain and support the volumes of voting that he anticipates. He will arrange to have several call-ins and substitutes at the ready should something happen, whether the, the crowd is just larger than he anticipated, or somebody calls in at the last minute, or somebody has an unforeseen event midday, so that he can do some, get some backup help in there. The ramp that was, has been removed, if you've not seen that, and the rental ramp to allow handicapped access will be installed by the close of business on Thursday, the 15th, just so the board understands and in the public at large, should we not receive the monies to install the new ramp at the Fall Town Meeting that we've requested? Apologize, I can't remember what article number that is, perhaps 11. In fact, to, to Well, I, my apologies, I don't have that at the, at the ready. That rental ramp will then remain in place for a while till we can sort out the long-term solution. With respect to the voting day itself, Paul had been awaiting a schedule of staff to be developed by the, the town clerk. I suggested that while it's a bit more work on his shoulders at this point in time, he should go ahead and prepare the schedules that he believe will meet his needs, forward it to the clerk for review, knowing at the end he may need to proceed on his own initiative. And he's, he's agreed with that approach. And finally, as I shared with you, he is not yet a full year on the job. And, you know, he's a bit uncomfortable moving forward at each step without specific authorization of the chair. But, you know, I had a very brief conversation with the clerk and with Paul both. And he understands that, what the situation is, and that he's going to need to step into that breach and, to the greatest extent possible, make those decisions. I'm confident that with our support, and I've told him to call upon me at any time, I'll go over and check with him each morning when I'm here. And just to, you know, not only double check where he is, but just make sure he understands he has our, our support and confidence. And we are going to have that report from the council by the close of business this week. She's promised it. So, you know, I've encouraged the clerk as well to consider me a backstop whenever and wherever I can lend some assistance in this and lend some reassurance to Paul. So that is the report that I mailed out to y'all earlier today. We'll keep you current as these evolve. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Please understand if your question is something I have to go get an answer for that I don't know right off the top of my head. But certainly we'll proceed to get you whatever answers we might to whatever questions you have.
Mr. Prisby.
Yeah, Carter, just a number of follow-up questions on this. The impression I'm getting, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that Miss LaValle's leave was not foreseen, and that it was sudden. What I'm hearing from you is that although she's not in the building, and I guess is technically on leave, she still is retaining some control over certain operations of the office, like scheduling. Is that correct?
Um, the scheduling that I'm referring to is the scheduling of election workers. Now, Paul's going to take that upon himself. I think he understands he needs to take a more proactive role. And what I've described to him is that in the long run, this may be a little more work upon his shoulders, but that he would then have some degree of certainty of how he was proceeding. So she, she is on leave, but she does retain control of the, the office. It's not the same as an appointed department head, where perhaps someone is, takes control of everything she does have. Has some ability to respond. And to the extent we can get information and advice from her, I certainly would encourage we do that. But first and foremost, the most important thing is that she be able to return to her position as soon as possible.
Are we assuming that she's going to be out through the election?
Based upon my knowledge, I have not yet been supplied with anything in writing, but it is my anticipation that as of, when she went out, yes, I would anticipate that she would be out through the election.
So what, what's, what's Mr. Cook's title right now in that office?
He is the Assistant Town Clerk. In some towns, it's called deputy.
Okay.
He has the ability to swear people in. He effectively the, has the authority of a clerk in their absence. There may be a form or two. I'd have to check on the statute, but by his title, he is able to do these things.
Okay.
And let me just say that after you've had a chance to reflect upon this memorandum, if questions come to you, do please just shoot them to me in an email, and we'll do our best to follow up on them and to get your similar report, whether it's a specific such as this one was, or it's included in the weekly. And hopefully you've had a chance to look at that. And let me know if you'd like some tweaks to that, because I want to start making that available to the public at large. Those, those updates, depending upon our own time scheduling, and this one clearly required a very specific one-off report to y'all to bring you current.
Okay. Mr. Ofton?
Yeah, thank you. I think we've covered basically the integrity component of the election with the ballots, how they're going to be handled, who's doing that, the staffing levels and all that, which is great. We've talked a little bit about accessibility in terms of the ramps and, and access to the, the voting drop-off box out front, which is great. I'm wondering about the, sort of the safety of the public and also the, in particular, the poll workers. I'm just wondering if it's possible for us to ask the clerk's office to send out to their poll workers, in addition to the schedule, some information about how they're going to manage the safety of those poll workers, you know, during COVID and with everything going on. I think that's an important thing to do. It's been my observation that generally, we have very good communication, lots and lots of very specific information on the town website relative to the elections in the past. And I want to make sure that, that that's also something that's covered down, so that if anybody has any questions about how to vote, when to vote, those safety protocols, you know, whether you're an election worker or just somebody going in to vote, that that information is easily accessible.
Sure. Let me do a one-sheeter on safety protocols. I'll touch upon both the town meeting upcoming, October 19, 7:00 PM at the high school. Please, please don't, you're going to find I take an opportunity to give shameless plugs for things like this whenever and wherever I can, watching this. So we'll get a one-page sheet out on the safety protocols for both the town meeting and the, the election, and also just a reminder about early voting. We'll get that well.
I love it.
I suspect that'll probably be close of business Thursday before I can get that up on the, on the site.
Makes sense. Madam Chair, we have a question from the audience.
I do see that. I just wanted to ask one more question before we, we bring the audience on. And Mr. Terranzini, you mentioned that our former town clerk, Mrs. Girardi, is helping in the town clerk's office. I just wanted to know more detail. In what capacity is she helping? Is she volunteering? Is she part-time? Is she full-time? What is her, her role now?
Happy to get that answer for you.
Okay. Mr. Ofton, if you want to promote Lydia to ask her question?
I will do that. You should be good, Lydia.
Hello there.
Hi.
I have, just since after 5:00 PM this evening, received several emails from Paul as to the correct handling of the two ballots that I got in the mail. And I will surrender both of them to him tomorrow morning. My question remains. I can't imagine I'm the only person out of how many thousand ballots when I was, that, that had some kind of a problem or another. I'm certainly glad to know that the interim administrator is going to print something out that'll be on the town website and maybe on the Facebook and whatever other configurations you have. Very glad to hear that. I'm very glad to hear that you're also plugged into the safety issues. Because I think for the most part, having worked early voting for town and the primary and the midterms, most of us poll workers are nice little old ladies. And if some guy comes in with an attitude, we're not physically or emotionally equipped to take care of it. It will certainly be nice to have at least one uniformed officer at each location on General Election Day. And will there be one or more during early voting when there's apt to be a much bigger crowd? I would anticipate that this weekend is going to be a line out the door, if the weather cooperates.
So Lydia, your question is, will there be more than one officer available for early voting? That's what you'd like the answer to?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if, Carter, are you frozen right now? I don't know if we can have the answer right this minute, but we will absolutely get it to you. Is that the only question you had? Are you satisfied with that?
I also had a question as to whether or not, for the sake of total transparency, the big red box could be moved down to the front of the PD, where it would not only be appropriately lit 24/7, but there would be a camera on it, unless there's a camera at the front of the municipal center that I'm not aware of.
Again, that's another excellent question. And I'm not sure if Mr. Terranzini is prepared to answer that tonight, or if, you know, if that might cause confusion, since voting has already started to move the, the box at this point in time.
I'm afraid that I lost internet connection there for about a minute, a minute thirty. Where I last heard the question was the presence of officers for Election Day. And then the next that I heard was a question about the possibility of moving the early ballot drop box. I'm not sure, so I want to make sure I haven't missed anything.
So those are the, those are the two questions. Ms. Beauregard would like to have a number of officers that will be there for early voting starting this weekend, as well as the possibility of moving the ballot box from the current position in front of the municipal center to the police station, so that it can be constantly monitored under surveillance as well as fully lit.
We'll, we'll get answers out within the next, again, by close of business Thursday.
All right. Thank you, Lydia.
Thank you. I, I don't, I don't mean to be paranoid, and I may sound that way, but having been part of the public safety community for over 20 years, you always hope for the best and plan for the worst. And Election Day, as well as And Election Day, as well as Halloween itself, will be under the full moon. And not for nothing, but if you've been in public service more than twenty minutes, you know that things get a little nuts when the moon is full. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Lydia.
Okay, Mr. Opton.
Oh, yeah, I think also just to note to the public, if you happen to have received multiple ballots, as Ms. Bogard did, please contact the clerk to coordinate to return those, or if you have any other ballot irregularities, the town clerk's office is the place to go.
Mr. Frisbee.
Yeah, just one last thing from me on this issue tonight. I, I do want to thank Donna, Nancy, Marguerite, and Carol for stepping up and helping out. Obviously, there are multiple minute, little crises going on at once. We've got COVID. We've got a mail-in ballot situation, and unfortunately, we're down one full-time town clerk. So we're a little shorthanded there, and, you know, when you see people pulling together for the benefit of the community, I think they deserve a shout-out and a thank you for, for that. And I guess the one question I do want to ask, to make sure I've asked it, and to, again, you know, like Lydia, not to sound paranoid, but you know, if Paul gets hit by a bus tomorrow or contracts COVID, now we seem completely up the creek, and it would behoove us, I think, to think about, if only to, to have this thought, what is the contingency plan there? Because I guess part of the reason you have an assistant town clerk is because something could happen to the town clerk. Now, something has happened to the town clerk, and what do we do if something happens to Mr. Cook? So that might be something to ruminate on and think about over the course of the next seven days or so.
Mr. Terenzini.
To add, first, I'd like to thank these, I don't know these citizens in your community, but clearly they're stepping in, in their, the interest of the community, because we also have the full-time administrative assistant in the clerk's office who was out on leave as well. I understand Mr. Frisbee's thoughts on developing Plan C. We have Plan B with Paul. But we'll, we'll discuss what that might be and attempt to respond to that with some thoughts by this whole package that we'll just try to get out for Thursday, close of business. But as we've added a question or two or three, it may evolve into the Friday's report. But yeah, Plan C. We'll get to work on it.
Okay, any other questions for this discussion item? Well, thank you very much for all the information, Mr. Terenzini. And we do have a reason to go into executive session tonight. So I'm going to move that the board enter into executive session in accordance with the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A, Pursuant to Purpose Three, Discuss Politigation. Having this discussion in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position. The only reason for us to return open meeting will to be to adjourn the meeting.
That's correct.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, but I roll call Mr. Opton.
Off tonight.
Mr. Frisbee.
Yeah.
Roy, I. Okay, so we are going to now close this meeting and unfortunately have everybody leave and start executive session.